Go ahead and call the meeting, daughter.
No Cindy?
Cindy's in Arizona. I didn't know that till noon. Well, apparently she didn't ask either.
Okay. The meeting will come to order. Okay, we need approval of the agenda.
Motion approved agenda with correction of Judy going in wherever she's going to that.
Okay, motion by Justin, second by Randy to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved or the consent agenda?
The one thing added to that list of bills that's in front of you is the REC bill in the amount of $15,685.95.
Do I redo that again?
One more time.
REC?
REC, yeah, Raccoon Valley.
Per power, right?
Right.
That's change the total somewhere around $49,000 then?
And Nancy, that electric upgrade, is that paid in full or is that just portion?
That is just the parts and supplies, the wire, the, all that good stuff.
So not the labor?
Not the labor. We won't get a bill from that until they're done.
Looking at the bills, we did not buy smoke from Auburn Feed. I guess we bought salt or something for the smoke.
Yeah.
That'd be good stretching.
Anything else on the bills or anything on the approved consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll send it.
Motion by Danielle, second by Justin to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Nancy, I have one question. I'm sorry. I'm at Iowa Association Municipal Utilities at 400. Is, does, since I, I thought we got 100% credit for me not attending.
We will, but it hasn't come back yet. So that is the actual expense plus the expense for doing our energy efficiency filing with the federal government.
Okay, so it's a filing as well as the conference.
Yeah, that was $125 and then it was $275 for the conference and we will get $125 back for that.
Okay, great.
And you guys all see our little plaque there, right? If you, if you want to take just a second, I'll tell you that we were the smallest utility to get an energy efficiency award. It went to the Musketeens and the Cedar Falls and Waverly and we were the smallest one. We had a very long list of things that we've done of our energy efficiency goal that we set. We set it and doubled it for our goals and the way they calculate all this, we have reduced our street lighting cost by 75%.
Because of that?
Yeah, so, and it was a great conference, good speakers and great conference and good contacts to make for going on down the road and finding out that we should be making more of these contacts for the work we have going on, so.
And they're the organization that puts us in touch with so many of the consultants and the assistants that a small municipality like us needs to get done what we do. Okay, I do.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay. Okay, Judy, I'm gonna run through the schedule or agenda.
Good evening. When I was here in January, I was here asking for a request to use the fire station for my seniors and since then I've had the health inspector come in and she's given me a sheet that says, "Okay, to move." And she was here on the 21st of January. So, and just a heads up, I will be at the fireman meeting asking permission in the United States. So if you don't know that, I'm telling you now.
I'll put you on notice.
Any concerns from the council about this that I, that you might have that I could answer?
Does that fit into our existing rules for use of the fire station? Are there any issues there or any hiccups there at all, Nancy, no?
Um, no, there are no hiccups there. What I would term the official rules of use are that the building is not for anyone's personal use.
And this won't be?
And any, and any use other than fire department operations or their particular use has to have special permission by the council. That's, that's the rule, plain and simple. Nobody gets to use it for personal use and if there's another event going on that's not the fire department's event, then it requires council permission.
And the only reason I'm asking is because I have looked through town for a place where there's no steps and there just absolutely isn't. And I hate to see my seniors use steps every day.
Oh, that's no problem. So the fire station, if it has a community purpose, which of course this does.
Well, this is more, more government because my group is supplied by the government.
Right, right. It's more just getting the rules down for the use of the fire station. So, okay.
Okay.
So are they excited about that or?
Yes, they are.
Is parking gonna be an issue?
I've talked to the firemen and I've, and they, the other day they had a fire and everybody, there was five or six pickups and they parked on the gravel and they do understand they cannot park in front of the doors if we get the use of the building. They'll have to park on the east and those that can cross the street will have to park on the other side of the street. And I've been told by a couple of firemen, I don't think these two, but not everybody shows up here to get the trucks. There's a handful and the rest show up at, to where the fire is. Am I correct?
Yep, that's generally how it goes.
So parking shouldn't be an issue?
I don't think so unless the firemen have an issue with it.
Well, if it becomes a problem, I mean, we can work it out with you. Alls I was told, Randy told me to discuss with everybody at the meeting.
Yep, that's all I'm asking, that's all I'm asking.
How many do you have?
I have nine downstairs and three takeouts, but I don't know if we were on a, with no steps, if I could get more. I don't think people like to use the steps. I'm guessing, I haven't asked, so.
Be interesting to watch.
Yep, alright, thank you guys.
Have you ordered off the menu or down here?
There's only one, there's only one thing.
It's a restricted menu.
You're told what you're getting. Thank you guys.
Thanks, thanks Judy.
Thanks Judy. Okay. Now we'll get to the public hearing on the budget. Oh, amendment to the budget, I'm sorry.
Right. Basically, this amendment just is really amending the budget to allow for the additional expenses in the electric fund and some in the water fund, but basically in the, those two funds that we had not planned on a year ago when we established this budget. It also adds $11,750 to the historical budget so that they can spend the money that they received a grant for some work to be done in the museum and they, so that's the two numbers that you see there. And I have not received any written or oral comments regarding this amendment.
Any questions or discussion on the amendment, proposed amendment?
So the numbers changed in the water and the sewer and the historical?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the amendment?
No, 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 we're still in public hearing.
Oh, I'll close the public.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Alright, motion by Jane to close the public hearing.
Second by Justin.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the amendment. No?
Well, it's a little farther down on the agenda.
Oh, okay, alright, we have to pass the resolution.
Yeah, I want to get Alan on the phone is what I really want to do next, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, it happens yesterday.
Okay, we're done with, we close that. Now we get to action items.
And you should have in front of you, this, you originally had the proposal that Alan sent you back in, I think we looked at that in November and then didn't take the time to call him.
It's dated October, right?
Yeah, it's dated October, but I think we looked at it in November. Alan, hi, this is Nancy in Auburn. How are you tonight?
Good.
I gotta try to figure out how to turn this up. Don't go away.
Okay.
My speaker phone is... I don't even know what I'm doing here. Go away. Can you hear me? No, he can't hear me. I hate this phone. Are you still there? Alan? Well, I didn't do very good on the volume because I think I, it got worse. I'm gonna call you back. This is the phone from downstairs. I know this one's... No, I don't want the phone book. If I wanted the phone book, I'd ask you that.
Do you know how long the juice is gonna be on the channel at that time?
The power?
Yeah.
Rumor has it that sometime after nine, and I've been telling people between eight and four. But they figure maybe two to three hours off. And maybe the whole town won't be out for, maybe just for 45 minutes, but then our alley is gonna be out for quite a while. I wanna get one of those milk cows, electric heater plugged in and keep going.
Not milk, not milk cow, milk house.
Milk house? Oh, okay.
I think this sounds better.
Can we get?
Yeah, that sounds better. I think we're gonna be able to hear you now. We have council here and what they have in front of them, Alan, is the original report that you had done. Put it back, I think it's dated in October. We were gonna call you at that point and discuss it with you and basically what council wants to know is, is it, what, what is the direction, our options that we can take and maybe your recommendation for a path forward and then we'll take it under consideration from there.
Okay. Well, it's kinda difficult because there's a lot of choices that are laid out going forward.
Well, give us your recommendation based on what you know.
Yeah, well, you know, to cut, to cut to the chase, I think that the emphasis needs to be first and foremost on reliability, you know, making sure that you deliver reliably reliable electric service to your customers. And secondly, almost as important is keeping it affordable in terms of cost. So, you know, the, the whole question of how much rate impact there is on, on customers for each of the option. The idea to completely rebuild the system all at one time is, is really too much expense at one time and it really can't be justified very well, in my opinion.
But there's no doubt we need to rebuild the system. It's obsolete.
No, I, I think, well, I, I don't think that you can say the system is obsolete. There's, there's parts of the system that are in, in a point where they need some serious repair, but to say that it needs to be totally rebuilt at one time, it's kinda like taking your car to the, to the shop and finding out you need a set of brakes. You don't buy a new car just because you need a set of brakes.
Right.
So there's certain work that needs to be done at a minimum and then at the other extreme, there's this Cadillac concept of replacing everything. And I think you can kind of eliminate, I don't think I have page numbers on these, but basically, um, to rebuild the system, um, talking about an overhead system, probably something on the, you know, assuming the family members are right and they don't have any reason to disagree with them, you're, you're talking about a cost in the range of $475,000. By the time you add on borrowing costs, you're, you're pushing that up and then more in the neighborhood of $600,000. That would have a rate impact of, of something in the two and a half to 2.8 cents per kilowatt hour range, uh, which would be extremely large impacting your customers. Um, new underground system is totally out, million and a quarter, 1.4 million in bonds. Repayment costs would be over $100,000 a year and you'd be talking about something between five and six cents added to your retail rate. So that's just not economically feasible. So, you know, in terms of, you know, to focus on need, um, there's two, there's probably two ways to go and then some variations of that. One is to, to just keep your 4160 system and do some work on it and do what I call strengthening or rebuild it slowly and, and have some kind of a goal to eventually convert it to 12.5. And the two are not, not necessarily terribly far apart, they'd just be different priority sets. If you wanna try to do this without funneling it into one large project, you know, from my perspective, I would, I would say it'd be prudent to say you're probably gonna be limited to something in the neighborhood of $20,000 to $30,000 a year. In expenditures, either for debt service or, or paying as you go. So, you know, from a, from a technical standpoint, if you, if you don't have any significant change in your load, no extremely large customers, you could, you can kinda start down a path and, and do some improvements. Again, say if you, you know, if you chose to spend, I'll say $25,000 a year, for the next four or five years, to do things like, there's, there's lanes in your alleys and this is mostly the low voltage lanes, the, what I would commonly be referred to as main line secondaries that are very old, the copper, they're, they're, what's called open wire, they're suspended on four wire racks with little, little spool infillators on them and those are murderous when it comes time to make repairs during ice storm or tornado events. Those are long past in need of replacement. So those, um, those would be something I'd, I would attack first, get those replaced. I, I assume that your electrician that you use that does that, or all these work could do most of that, if that remains to be seen. There's, um, you know, another thing I would recommend is that you have an understanding as you have a spare transformer to, uh, in case you're, you have a ton of damage. I would install that on the system and turn it on so it's useful and if something should happen, you just open and close it, uh, various switches and use the one that's working, you know, isolate the one that's not. You already spent the money to buy it, it doesn't take much to install it and put it to use. And that improves your reliability substantially because recovering from failure of the main transformer turns into an hour or two outage instead of a day or two outage. And then initially at least, if you, if you pay as you go, I would say you just replace poles if they're desperately needed, focus mostly on replacing that low voltage wire. Then once that work is substantially done, which is gonna be, I'm gonna say four or five years depending on how far you can actually get with $25,000 a year, then you probably would move into a mode where you'd start replacing poles that need to be replaced but weren't desperate enough to, to have to do it as you were doing this other work. You know, a couple of years of that would do quite a lot. And frankly, Derek C. indicated to me that they, they really don't want to get too involved in, in the low voltage side of your system and these pole chains out. Well, they, they might do them on a have to basis with the old wires on them. They'd be a lot happier coming in and doing that on the, in a situation where all those, all those open copper wires were gone. So I guess on a pay as you go basis, I would say, you know, if you talk about spending something on the order of $25,000 a year for the next, I'll say eight to 10 years, you'd have your system in good condition and, and should be usable for a long time. Now if you take it a step past that, um, that ninth or 10th year, maybe even 11th or 12th year, if it, if it took that long, there could be some, some work to bump the system low voltage up to 12.5. A good share of the system's gonna have the light insulation on the high voltage side. You know, at that point, if it's needed, uh, we done, phase done. Or you could just take a rep for a few years and, and bank $25,000 a year and then maybe take that on all with one project, do it all at one time. So, have I lost everybody?
No, I don't think so, but I have a question. So you're suggesting that what we need to do is the replacement of the low voltage wire, the copper wires, to make it simple, is, is the first step in a longer age plan and that would still fit in seamlessly with rebuilding slowly to the 12.5 system, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What I'm seeing is it's your biggest risk in terms of storm damage. It's fragile, it's, uh, easily, you know, the wind can wrap them up and start shorting things out and then they start burning wires down and it's really a nightmare to try to put it back up.
How much would $25,000 a year go toward replacing the amount of that kind of low voltage wire in the city? I mean, where would $25,000 get us in replacement? Would that do a fourth of the town?
No, no, no. Well, in terms of, I think it would do between, between 20 and 25% of the low voltage wire that needs to be replaced in a year. What's gonna happen along the way is, is you start looking closer at, at laying out a plan saying, let's, let's do these four blocks or five blocks. There's gonna be a pole or two that needs to be replaced and the expense of that's gonna probably eliminate one of the, I'll say, if the target was five blocks a year, maybe in reality you can only do four because there's gonna be something that needs to be done that can't be put off, poles that are completely rotten or some situation where there's some other work that would need to be done. I don't have a good handle on how many total blocks there are with this, with this secondary that can need a replacement, but, um, it's quite a lot. It's probably 25 blocks would probably be best guess of this plan.
So with that, what you're suggesting is that you could put together a plan for us to eventually accomplish that goal, right?
Yeah, yeah, if you're gonna do it one year at a time, like, you know, I think I can be helpful in that regard on this laying workout for, for some local contractor to do and you can avoid the ammiriam and bidding situation. There could be a point, like I say, when, when the experience with reconductoring kinda makes me believe that you can't just hire a contractor to come in and do a small job. I think that's, that's not gonna be practical, so when it comes time to actually convert down the road, uh, at that point, I think they'd look more at, let's get an engineer involved, do what's, you know, the last steps, which would be the completing the insulation changes and replacement transformers, those sorts of things.
But you would provide suggestions at what point that should occur, right?
Yeah, like I say, I think in terms of, you know, to do everything at one time, at this point, I think it just burdens the customers too much, the debt service. And you're, you're probably looking at, if you hired somebody to come in and replace any pole that looks to be in need of repair or needs to be taller because of current requirements with higher voltages, those sorts of issues, you're probably talking at, you know, something in the, oh, 250 to 300,000 range. It's, it's hard to know that for sure. It's, you know, really put a number on that that's reliable, but it'd probably be safe to say your, your borrowing would probably be in the 400 to 450 range. Debt service about $35,000 a year for that.
So Alan, can, if I can cut to the chase, if you were to put together a plan, a gradual plan, I think that's, based on the nodding going around here, maybe, that's, that at least would be my preference to do it in a gradual, over a 10, 12-year time period, you would be available to put together a comprehensive plan for us, including accessing supplies and that sort of thing?
What it would probably be would be more of a detailed look saying, okay, in the first year, here's the worst stretch we need to concentrate on in the first couple of years, that we lay out in detail saying, okay, replace from pole one to pole two with this kinda wire, replace this house service or that house services as they apply. You know, lay it all out so that you could, you could hand it to a contractor saying, this is what needs to be done. There may be other options other than the electrician you've been using, um, that can be pursued too, but I guess my suggestion would be to lay out all of the secondary replacements, you know, pieces so that they could be, and what I'm sort of visualizing is one block segments unless there may be some cases where it's a block and a half or some hassle.
So you'd do all that evaluation analysis?
Grab them and say, okay, let's do these four rather than these five or these six rather than these five, depending on the money available, that sort of thing. And the way all of that worked out, the piece at the end might be more just a, sort of a narrative that says, okay, here's what would need to be done to do a conversion over to 12.5. Which, which insulators need to be replaced? Inventory of what transformer sizes and whatnot, so that was all pretty well known. And it'd just be sort of lumped together, it wouldn't be cost estimates, right? It'd just be something you can hand to an engineer saying, okay, this is what needs to be done and then they can give you some good idea what their, uh, estimates would be for that work.
Is it the consensus of the group that, that that we'd, we'd like to know what it would cost for you to put together some sort of plan for us?
Oh, yeah.
Alan, did you catch that?
No, I'm, I can hear you, but that's all I can hear.
That's very common at these meetings. I think it's the consensus of the group that, yes, we'd like you to put together some sort of plan.
Or a proposal.
Proposal, proposal for a plan.
Okay. I can do that. I, I will warn you that it may be sort of loose. I'll probably make the, the estimate quite a bit higher than I think it might be because it's, it's kinda, there's a lot of variables involved. So I'll, I'll put something together and, and like I say, I, I don't, I don't like going back, asking for modifications over and over if they're over and over if they may be major. So I'll get something to you and kind of an explanation of how I would approach it.
Okay.
Give you another pole agreement proposal and get that to you.
Yeah, I think that's kind of where we're at tonight is we want to look at that next step and then if you've got, you know, I think you did a nice job of laying out what the next steps are and what the commitment we need to make to completing this project.
Okay. I need to know a little bit on timelines, if this is something that you see you want quickly or if it's something that can be done over the next, I'm going to say, year. That's a stretch, but I spend my summers in South Dakota, so.
[laughing]
My work time is basically between now and the first of May and then from November and December and the latter part of the year.
Yeah, what council doesn't know is that you just won't do your electrical work on your fishing boat.
I don't blame you.
But I don't spend all my time in the boat either. But yeah, there's probably, frankly, probably a week and a half, roughly a week to a week and a half of field work just out there, going pole to pole and making notes and that sort of thing. And then from there, I can pick it up and that can be done in South Dakota.
Well, here's what I'll tell you our timeframe is. We are budgeting some money in the next budget year to spend towards this project.
Okay, so this would be something that would be done next winter then?
Yeah, probably next winter, yes. Although not when it's below zero because you got to know that Kerry and Peterson is finishing up their work tomorrow and we've been taking a lot of heat for shutting the power off in this temperature.
I'm glad to hear they're going to be done. Because I was getting a little nervous.
Yeah.
I drove through Auburn twice in the last couple of weeks and they weren't getting much done very fast. So I was a little nervous about what the overruns are going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, when they gave you an estimate, I don't know what they were thinking they were going to do for sure. And they started getting nervous, in my discussions with them, they were getting a little nervous when REC superintendent was weighing out all that expensive work. They were aware of what he was coming up with and that was nowhere near what they were thinking in the beginning.
Yeah, yeah. We finally got on the right page when we got the REC guy out of the middle.
Yeah.
And that wasn't exactly his fault. I'll take some responsibility for that, but I think we're on the right page. I think we're all on the same page unless you have some questions for us.
No, I need to make you aware of one other thing too. I'm maybe having some major surgery, so whatever this agreement says, I mean, we can work through the process of getting the agreement in place and signed, but it may have a clause that says if Alan becomes incapacitated or dies, that the whole thing just becomes always.
Okay. You aren't going to do either one, so, okay?
I hope not, but yeah, this is pretty serious stuff.
Okay. So his proposal is going to get to us in fairly quick order, correct? Okay. In his actual, so we'll have the analysis on, or no, we won't have the analysis?
We'll just have a proposal of what it may cost for him to come do the analysis.
Okay.
And then the analysis could take place possibly between now and summer and then he will.
Do you think the analysis?
He'll digest, no, he'll digest it while he's in South Dakota and he'll be back to us possibly late summer or fall.
If you, if you folks decide you want to go ahead fairly quickly, I may do the field work and just bill you after July 1st or something just so I can get it done.
Okay.
It all depends on that surgery. I have no idea what's going to happen with that yet, so.
Okay. Well, we've been, this council, and I'm going to speak out loud and if I'm speaking out of turn, they'll correct me, but we've kind of headed down the road where we've decided what it is we want to do. And then they've been very good about trusting me to work out the details along the guidelines that they've given us. And so I think if we're all on the same page, I think we're okay to kind of move forward. And I keep them up to date by emails and things and if anybody has a problem with what we're doing, they let me know. So did I, if I said anything out of turn here as long as we?
Nope.
And I'll, if you put that proposal together, I'll probably shoot that out to everybody by email and they can look it over and tell me whether or not they like it or not.
You can stop then. I'll print it off a marine to you.
Okay. When are you meeting next?
March 10th. But we'll, I think we can try to get this approved via the email or the phone and get you going on it before March 10th, Alan. Don't you guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, it won't be tomorrow. I'll be out of town tomorrow, but sometime before the end of the week, I'll have something in your hands.
Perfect. That sounds awesome.
Good.
Anything else? Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
That's no problem.
Thank you, Alan.
Good luck.
Thank you. Stop and see me once a week and I'll fill you in.
You want me to take you out of work to come see you?
Well, no, maybe not that. Or if you're on break, call me and say what's going on.
You got that much free time?
I have no free time, but I always have time to talk to a council person. Is that the right answer?
Do we need any action on Alan's proposal right now?
No.
Basically, what I'll do is when I get it, I'll send it out to you. You guys tell me yes or no, and then it'll be on the agenda for formal approval at the next meeting. But then he can get going if, I don't think it'll be real scary, but.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of mutual aid agreement, ATPA.
And that's the result of something?
American Association of Paper.
Is asking for, right?
Yeah, this is the American Public Power Association, Verdi.
Oh, close.
Yeah. And basically, this is something that the public agencies across, or utilities across the United States have begun to do in the event that you have a big disaster, Hurricane Sandy or a 2010 ice storm, and you get mutual aid or we send mutual aid to another community. With this agreement, it makes the FEMA portion of all of that smoother. And so that's really, do I think we're ever going to be able to send somebody to help somebody? Probably not. But if Brita had a tornado, we may send Jerry down there to help them for a few days. So it just helps with all the FEMA regulations that this is in place. And Brita is one of the, just to use them as an example, one of the utilities in the state who has signed this agreement, so.
So it's basically for the utility, all utilities need this kind of thing or should have this kind of thing?
We already have an Iowa utility mutual aid agreement within the state, but because some of your help sometimes comes from out of state, now they're moving to this next level.
Well, I'd make a motion.
But Brita's the only one that's on this agreement so far, right?
Um, the only local one. I can tell you Alton, Brita, Cedar Falls, Dennison, Hartley, Haywarden, Independence, Indianola, Lake Park, Manila, Orange City, Paulina.
You get way down here.
Primgar, Rock Rapids, Sioux Center, Waverly and Woodbine have all signed on to this so far. Now.
So there's no downside?
No, there's no downside to it.
It doesn't obligate us to do anything?
No, it's just if, if we need someone to come in here and we start trying to get reimbursed for those costs, FEMA says, well, did you have a mutual aid agreement with them? Yes, we did.
We've got one in place.
Yes.
I don't agree with you.
You get to be the second because Jane already motioned.
Yeah, I did it quietly, naturally quiet, quietly.
Is there an official you're going to second?
She don't want to.
Okay. Motion by Jane, second by Randy. Approve the mutual aid agreement. Any further discussion on the motion? All the votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay.
Okay, approving the amendment to the budget that we discussed a little while ago.
Motion to approve resolution 14-4.
Okay, motion by Justin, second by Randy to approve the amendment. Any discussion? All the votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, in front of you, you have the latest update of the budget. And Randy, you missed a very fun meeting. Basically, though, we had such a good budget meeting that I've made very, very few changes to what you looked at. In fact, I made, the only changes that were made in any of the utilities were the wage line items because you guys had moved away from a percentage increase to putting that same amount of money into our payment for health insurance. And so those, these numbers reflect that at a dollar figure of $150 a month and because that is what that all worked out to be with the savings in the FICA and IPers. So, and you'll remember that we can levy for those portion of that payment that comes from the general fund and the road use tax fund.
Since you missed the meeting, you talked about the fire budget. It was the 6,600, which was the $600 increase, right? And I guess we, more or less earmarked that increase towards if they want to purchase the tanks or things like that, that's what that's for. Otherwise, it's not for general use. And then, what, there was another one that we did?
Library?
Did we end up doing that with libraries? Yeah, what was that on? That was?
That extra hours?
No, one of the extra hours. It was, what was that, Nancy?
No, you, we made no changes to the library's budget.
Okay.
Although we had lengthy discussion about allowing them the money to be open another 10 hours a week. And that is the one thing that you guys have to give me to put in this budget if you're going to do it.
Yeah, because I was thinking we didn't make that decision.
No, we did not.
It was kind of up in the air, wasn't it?
Yeah, that one is up in the air. Basically, the two things that are up in the air is, do you want to budget for the health insurance in this manner and what are you going to do about the library? Those are the two.
You want to do the health insurance first? Is it, where is it at?
Well, it's scattered throughout here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of recap it so everybody knows what's going on. Because I think it changed after the meeting, nice, a little bit.
Um, well, here, not a lot. What changed, what we discussed at the meeting was taking the 4% that was in the budget, that 4% applied to Jerry's and my wages from what we're currently getting and whatever savings we would have from diverting that, those dollars from wages to health insurance because we don't pay FICA and IPers on that health insurance. Okay? So we diverted those dollars and what it, those dollars were ended up being 150 a month where we had estimated at the meeting it being 130. But dollar for dollar, it was 150. In fact, I'm not quite sure how it did it, but in my figures, it actually lowered most of our expense budgets just a little bit.
So the question on the table is whether or not you want to give a 4% raise in wages or translate that basically into an additional, an additional 150 a month per person for health insurance, lump sum payment.
Two people.
Two people.
Yeah, just, that affects just two employees.
Yeah, I did say per person.
Yeah.
So that's.
Are you guys like getting hot?
We're just getting hot.
Maybe the kids are done running, I can open the door, but.
And that total amount, Nancy, what would that total amount be?
Um, total amount of the raise?
Total cost to the budget, let's say it that way.
Did I do that right?
I know it's spread across.
Yeah, $3,600 is total cost to the budget, but the 4% raise would have been the same.
Right, that's why I'm, that's spread across the bunch of platforms. $3,600.
And the other issue, hearing no objections, I'm going to leave it in the budget that way, we'll approve it. Pardon?
With the insurance?
Yes.
Not before.
Yes. Unless you, there's an objection. It's not officially approved until you make an official action on it.
I have no objection.
So, I mean, if you want to make an official action on it, you're free to do that, but.
Well, I think, let's talk about the next subject and then, if that's okay, Verdi, let's talk about the next pending subject and then we could take official action on both. How's that?
Okay.
I wish Cindy was here, but I can understand why I would go to Arizona, too.
Uh-oh.
The approximate $5,700 additional for, well, incidentally, Randy, bring up the historical just to ask for the general operating, or general overhead, I call it, the stuff that the city provides, the historical, just so they can open the doors. So they didn't ask for any additional funds other than that. So it's the same as last year. So then the library asked for their general operating budget and lump sum amount.
And no increase in that portion of it.
Right, right. And they want to put Danita in for what, 10 hours extra?
30 hours a week.
30 hours. That would make her 30 hour a week employee. Approximate cost of the budget is $5,700.
Closer to 58, but, yeah.
Okay, $5,800.
I said 6,000 because you know how those things go. They always cost more.
So we just need some sort of, I think we need to vote because it's a, it's a big item, a big cost. And I'll go first, I would support it as a one-time funding for them. And in terms of priority, and I give this to Nancy, that, you know, instead of putting the matching money, removing the gazebo, that I would rather see that put into adding those 10 hours at one time and just see how it goes. See if, you know, I think that is, that's my personal opinion. That's my individual opinion.
Just informational, I did visit with Danita about it this morning. And of course, they will be very tickled to death if the council would do this one time. But I told her that it would be, I was under the impression that it would be one-time money and that the library board, the library, whoever, to sustain it beyond this one time would need to do some fundraising and some other things. She did feel that maybe raising $6,000 was maybe a pretty big task for a board like theirs or for their organization, but she certainly felt like they would probably give it a heck of a go to try to do that. Personally, I asked her personally because she admitted to me, she said, I really think that, that some of the boards wanting to have this open more has to do with her as librarian. She understands the fact that should someone else be in her position, that everybody on the, involved may not be as supportive as they are with her in this position. And I told her honestly that you guys had had that discussion as well. She said her board had had that discussion, but that at this point she has no intention of going anywhere else. She's happy here and so, just for whatever that's worth.
All jobs get personal, that's, you know, yeah. It's all dependent on the person that's in it.
Yeah, it really does, too.
So it, does it, do you want to wrap those two votes together or do you want to separate them or you want to have more discussion?
Question, no, just, buddy. Question now, this, Buddy, you said one time only, so next year, the library has to come up with the...
There's no guarantee, right. There's no guarantee, no commitment.
It's a one-year program, isn't it?
And we, we give it to them as one-time money, so they know upfront. And then, is it, is it also possible to start before the beginning of the fiscal year? You and I talked about that a little bit, Nancy, but I don't know.
It probably is, but we would have, it would be a little harder to track the total dollars to say, "Here's where your total dollars end." But can I do that? Probably. You know, it's another three or four steps, but, but yeah. And i- if you just approve it in this budget, I mean, you really need to approve it as an amendment, not a formal amendment, but an amendment to the 14 budget if you want them to be able to start sooner. Otherwise, it would have to wait until the 1st of July to get started, so. And I don't know, you know, the other thing we talked about, just for your information, is one of the things I'd asked her is, is if you had additional hours, is there another tier or level in your library accreditation that would have some dollars that would funnel back from the state? And the answer there is no. They have certain criteria to meet. The next step is full accreditation. And full accreditation requires them to remodel the bathroom in there and make that bathroom more handicapped.
So they don't get any increased state funding for...
Yeah, so...
For the upper level.
I was kind of hoping that maybe, you know, even if $1,000 came with that, you know, that either lets the council off the hook for 1,000 or allows them to have another 1,000. They would also have to add a lot more adult programming to be able to accomplish their accreditation. Right now, it's pretty much children's programming. And, and that's really, I think, what she intends to do with the extra 10 hours is add some adult programming, some computer stuff and I don't know what all else, but invite the adults to come in at the times when the kids are still in school, so.
That means I gotta be nice to her.
You do. You have to be uncharacteristically nice, so...
Okay, I'm ready for a motion here.
Do you want them wrapped together? Do you have to do it in a file of a motion?
No, but you do need to somehow tell me to put it in the budget if that's what we're gonna do. It, it can be approved within the budget and it stands as, as an action.
Right.
Because once I...
I'm voting consent.
Yeah. And with approval of the budget, then you would formally approve it next meeting.
I would make a motion to approve the budget with the 57, 58, whatever it ends up being.
The increase to the library.
The increase to the library and the increase to the...
Before you finish? We had talked about them giving a raise. Are you gonna put a stipulation on that?
That they give her a raise?
No, that they don't use this money to give her a raise.
At current wages.
Yes, but it, it, it be used specifically for extended hours. I don't want to phrase it the other way.
At current wages?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And that the health insurance benefit increase by $150 a month for Jerry and Nancy.
Per individual?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my motion. So I'm gonna stick with that.
Well, second. Motion by Jane, second by Justin to approve the budget as she proposed it. I'm not gonna repeat what you said. Any further discussion on the motion? All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Where do you want to start? Tables and chairs?
Okay.
We have 11 or 12 of those big, old, heavy, brown tables that were in the community building downstairs. And we have 200-plus chairs. And I would love it if we could get rid of all but about four tables and maybe keep 50 chairs. That would set chairs around four more tables and have some spares down there if you really wanted to crowd people in down there.
We had a driveway sale here about three years ago. How'd that go?
We aren't doing that again.
Okay, that's actually my question.
No.
I already heard about that.
Well, I didn't know.
Who's, did you, you really weren't set up for that?
No.
Oh, I thought you were giving me a bad time?
Well, I won't do that in public.
Anyway, I think council, you can, you can put them, you can do bids on them, you can do silent bids, or you can put a price on them. It's such a small amount, you could put a price on them and sell them to first, whoever gets in here. Whoever backs in with the truck and cash gets them.
Okay, that's what we should do.
Set the price and Jerry says the ta, the chairs are worth a buck apiece at quant.
Okay.
So...
Wait, wait.
Yeah, so sell the chairs for $2 and the tables for 25. I don't know.
I, I don't...
Just a suggestion.
Yeah. I just think we're gonna end up with some people wanting them and they didn't get the first phone call in, so they didn't, you know, kind of thing. I mean, how do we, how do we regulate that, Nancy? Because I think there, there's gonna be some people who, who want them.
First phone, first service.
Put it in the newsletter and they're all delivered at the same time.
If you regulate to 15 per person, then you end up, you know what I mean?
I just think whoever comes in gets them first. First phone, first service, everyone has to buy them. Just get rid of them. And that's what your intentions are.
Okay.
You know, if there are any easier way to do it.
Okay. Can I, can I speak for the historical that, could we look at a couple of the tables? What did you want for the tables?
Well, here's, here's what I'm thinking. I'm gonna, I think we should hold back four tables and 50 chairs. So if they're still here and you guys need them, they're still here.
Well, if that's the kind of deal, if you're gonna do that, the historical will be able to use them, just give them to them.
Exactly. They can use them. I, I, I don't think you guys should spend your funds to purchase them. Because, because then the city clerk's gonna make you move them. This way, if the city owns them, they can probably stay where they are.
What I'm thinking is, when you sort off four good ones, I've no, I've been down there.
There's a couple that are not as good as others.
Yeah, there's, there's...
But there's also...
More than a couple.
At least two in the library that I think the city still owns.
Right, that they intend to.
Or not.
Or, yeah, or...
I think there's some of that that maybe, those that are over on the wall, I'm not sure. Eventually, I'm hoping that junk gets cleaned up and they don't need those.
Could we agree to this, to let the historical look at what they need? And because with our added space, we're gonna be able to run those tables down the side farther, basically. And is that possible to give them to, to let us have, basically, pick off four of them for the historical?
That's up to the council, but we didn't do this a year ago because you wanted them for the historical to be real open about it. We were gonna sell them a year ago, so, I mean...
I never got the green light to move them, so I guess I didn't know we could move them.
That's up to you guys to do that, but, I mean...
If I got the green light to move them, I would move them. If you, you want the historical to get them out of there, we'll get them out of there. Okay, get your four tables out of there. Please, okay.
Chop, chop. If not, they're gonna be sold.
Coming out in the newsletter.
Yeah, you get them before...
Take some chairs, too? Yeah. Okay. Because what I'm thinking is...
Well, and they're still in the building. If we ever really need them, they're still here.
They could launch it.
The historical can take some chairs.
But I mean, if there's another purpose someday, they're still in the building, so, you know, I don't, I don't see that as a big issue.
Well, if they want what they want, let them have it, then we'll keep the four that you want to keep in there regardless.
Well, yeah, but it...
Let's see, let's say we take six.
Yes, we have all that we can fit down there.
She keeps four. That's 10 tables.
So it might not have 20.
Okay, all right, you're okay with that?
We're gonna get a director.
If you can be available, help me get them out there.
Here's your director, move the tables and chairs.
Got it, got it, okay. So I can, I can...
You got the green light, go.
I can take whatever chairs and tables I want out of there, put them in the historical and they're, but you want to keep four here. Correct.
Well, I think we should have some spares, but that probably leaves us three to get rid of then.
That was just what I was saying. That's okay? Three to get rid of, three to get rid of, okay.
A lot of chairs don't fly their way back down there.
No, no. One stop, one...
One stop, the door gone.
There you go.
Well, yeah, once you carry these out, you aren't gonna... So what do you want to sell the tables for, guys?
20 bucks.
20?
Give them gone.
Okay, and the chairs?
What, about 20?
Yep, 2 bucks, give them gone.
Okay.
I don't want a new one runs. What do we pay for our new ones?
Our's, they're like... Our's are padded.
I don't know, but they're, what, 8 bucks apiece?
I don't know for sure. Makes a difference with the pad. People don't like sitting on hard ones.
Well, and these are getting rusty and they're, yeah, they're old. They're really old.
These chairs are...
Okay. All right.
All right, when do I need to get down there? I want to sell this one. Can we wait till it warms up just a tad?
It's gonna be dark down there tomorrow.
It's gonna be warmer.
Oh, it's gonna be dark in, oh, not tomorrow morning. I will get down there.
Thursday, it'll be warm.
38, okay.
The newsletter comes out on Tuesday night or Wednesday morning, so, not this week, next week.
Oh, next week, okay. All right, no, so I will get them out this week. You heard it, you heard it.
Okay.
Jerry, I will get them out this week.
Jane, next week, Wednesday, it'll be 50.
That's gonna be a personal limit.
Okay, unanimous consent on that plan?
Yep.
Okay.
Right on the chairs or should we go cheaper?
I go buck and a half piece for the chairs, give them out if you want to get rid of them that bad.
Oh, go a dollar if they're worth that.
Nobody's gonna give you 2 bucks apiece for them chairs, I hate to tell you that.
Do weight weight, or do weight weight, that's about what you get.
A dollar fifty is easier.
I don't care.
Somebody wants to junk them, they can junk them, too. Don't matter. You're gonna get rid of them anyway.
That's my buck and a half, give them gone.
There's not a lot of people that really are gonna invest in steel chairs. I don't think I'm gonna do that.
Because I'm gonna take this one.
That's because we got some bus seats.
Here's the next one.
Okay, why don't we go with the chair now, buck and a half?
Buck and a half, it's getting cheaper.
Yep, we're playing, like, make a deal.
Do you have some bus seats we could use for a historical display?
We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, let's not talk about that tonight. Cyclones are playing, guys.
Oh, right.
Firetruck, the old antique one. Jerry wants it out of the shop. Randy can't find parts for it.
Does the fire department not want it at all?
They want it, but they want it fixed and they don't know how to fix it and nobody can fix it, so they still want it. Without it confusing enough.
Can, can we defer on the firetruck until they talk about it next, this Wednesday?
You can't be out of ruin with that big building.
It is when you got electric people coming in and out of the area.
Yeah, electric people in front of town.
No, but there was $15,000 worth of stuff that had to go inside where it wouldn't get stolen.
I understand that it shouldn't take that much room, put it in the corner until it's there.
Guys, we've been talking about fixing this for 10 years.
The cities, you decide what you want to do with it.
That's why you guys have it on the table as a council.
Fire department will give you 10 bucks for it, I'll take it. I'll find a place for it. That's the case. I mean, I'm just saying, I don't think it should be trashed out and utilized, gone.
No, I don't think it should be pulled outside. Can, can we, as a courtesy, have it on the agenda at the fire department meeting? And you guys talk seriously about it and, and if there's a serious desire to maintain it and store it and do something, just take it from there. Let's defer it one more month. Will that work, Jerry? Just don't pull it outside quite yet.
No, I ain't gonna pull it. Jesus Christ, it's gonna take a hell of a record to pull that thing out. When the brakes are going, the outs are waiting.
Don't be, I'm not having nothing to do with this.
Okay, all right.
We'll bring it up.
We'll talk about it.
Defer it till next, put it on next month's agenda.
Have you looked everywhere, Randy, for parts?
They don't make them, they won't. They have to be specially made, the brakes.
So what is it with the brakes?
They don't work.
They're locked up, they...
They don't work, the cylinders are bad because of the old style of cylinders.
You can go forward, but you can't go backward.
They just need to be backed off to do that.
Can we rebuild the cylinders? No.
You can make new ones, but then that comes back to what do you want to spend to make it work? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I can't make them unless I take them to shop and I'm done. But they didn't, the whole thing was, nobody, they didn't want to spend that much money to get it fixed and proven, so we just kind of just walked away from it. You know what I mean, kind of? I mean, it did run at one time.
I need to talk to you guys about the historical and maybe making some sort of, with the consent of the city, um, you know, I've got a place to store it, but until we can find whatever we need to do. But it could even be a great fundraising event for the historical if I can get, you know, if you guys absolutely don't want anything to do with it. So I didn't want to preempt your meeting, but...
You gotta stall for it over here? Because it doesn't have to run, it doesn't have to have brakes. We can get it shoved in.
I've got a tip, oh, stop, stop. He's not funny.
For a long time, so I can't say it hasn't been run.
So if we can just defer it until next month?
And that wasn't a problem.
You got room in your shed?
It's got a hundred years since we've had it run, I don't know.
I just can't see where I would be that, the amount of money to have.
You have to make that stuff. My wife, after she went parker van outside, it could be done this time.
And I don't mind asking you to.
She asked you if you wanted to sleep in it, dude, it could do it. You really put my mind to it.
We're mad now, but it's not a problem. I can make it work. You didn't see that, did you, Nancy?
No.
Okay. Then they gotta come around the corner and make it run again. So the firetruck is on this table for one month?
Yeah, we're gonna discuss that later.
Yeah.
Probably.
The other one I have is Sanders. You want to get rid of that one?
The standard, the bell standard?
We find skinny enough people to put behind the wheel.
You've been a cool...
Yeah, it sits in the back end.
No, I mean, that's what we do.
Can't be kind of cool with a cart.
Of course, it's got a dent in front of it. Yeah. Good help with that ship, that's...
I know how to body guys. I really think you should.
Boy, I...
I think it'd be great to have up and running, it'd be awesome, but...
Okay.
It's possible, let's put that way.
Sanders. Yeah, I think you should, really.
Sanders what?
This one's yours.
This is mine.
Tell them what you got.
Hand Sanders.
Yeah, no, we got a Sander that fits in the back of a pickup. Don't need no order. Sell that one and then, the other Sander is the one that we used to use for quite a few years when I got here, that was a fertilizer spreader deal. And it's rusting out. And I wanted to know if you guys want to swap that one for the trailer I got for the Christmas lights sitting on it.
You want to swap the trailer with the Christmas lights for a rusty Sander?
I'll give you the...
You want the Sander is what you're saying?
No, I don't even want the Sander, but...
You'll just swap it out?
I guess, guess two of the tires are on the Sander is mine to begin with, but instead of you guys finding a truck, uh, you know, a trailer to put the Christmas lights on, we'll just swap.
That sounds like one of those really good deals, doesn't it?
I mean, the other, that other Sander is, you know, metal doesn't do too good with salt. I mean, the bearings are all gone and...
It hasn't been used, so it probably doesn't work.
The pulp, you're talking, the fertilizer one?
Yeah, the one you pull behind, it just...
How about the pickup one? Is that one workable? Does it work?
I haven't used it since we got the other one, so...
It's gotta have an electric motor to make it work.
It's got the electric clutch and...
Is that something we can maybe put on that big iron or something like that?
I think I know another city that might be interested in purchasing it if you guys would set a price.
Swap the fertilizer one for his trailer, and the other one if you can sell, sell.
Yeah. We bought the one from Lake City for a hundred bucks.
Yeah.
The one for the box thing.
Sounds good.
Yeah, the pickup one, right?
Yeah, the one that fits in a...
He paid...
Can you get that piece junked out?
Yeah, he bought it from Lake City for a hundred bucks.
Will it give us five hundred?
Just go back.
What's, what's Litten? So you're gonna sell it to Litten for how much?
No, I didn't say nothing.
Oh, okay.
I just...
I think you may be able to sell it to them. But...
Do you wanna inquire?
I do. Do you wanna set a price, or do you want me to have...
What do we buy it for?
A hundred bucks.
A hundred bucks, we're good, gone.
That's kinda what I was thinking, but...
Hundred bucks as is.
Yeah.
As is, yeah. It's set there for three or four years. You know, I never used it, so I don't know.
Okay, I'll see if I can make that happen.
They pick up.
Okay. Can do that too.
We don't deliver.
Oh, yeah, he'll, he'll love wasting a half a day to do that. Oh, I didn't say that.
Okay, do we need action on the, uh, tables and chairs, or is that pretty well taken care of?
I'm gonna put down that you guys gave unanimous consent to the, this plan, okay? Because it's...
Tables and chairs with the fire trucks next month.
Yep.
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 And the Sander, yeah, we swap all the Jewish treasures as well.
Yep, and price the other one to the other city.
Directly get rid of the tables and chairs, or move them.
Amen on them, yep.
Okay. Approved equipment purchase.
I told you at the last meeting that we needed to purchase a set of forks and a grapple attachment for the skid loader. The price at Martin's Welding for those two pieces of equipment is three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. I did go ahead and priced them at Haley's, and I didn't write down the total, but the total is higher at Haley's. So, the price at Martin's Welding is an honest, good price.
At Haley's, was that for Bobcats?
Yeah.
And four?
Yes. It pretty much is exactly the same thing. There was two different...
So what's a grapple for?
Grappled. Why do we need them?
Brush and trees. And lots of other stuff.
Forking, what? What?
Jerry borrows Tanner's very, very regularly, and so far Martin's Welding has not billed us for all those uses that he's went and got. All this electrical equipment and stuff, we've had to go borrow his forks to unload, and every time we have something shipped, we have to go to either Tanner or Stan at the feed store and get this stuff unloaded. So, most of this, this will eliminate that whole issue, so...
Okay, you need... Yeah, who would want them then? If you need them, can you always do it? Motion to proceed with the purchase?
What about warranty? I mean, are they comparable? I mean, if a cylinder blows out, is it, I mean, I'm sure, are there's a warranty at Martin's? We had that on ours that we brought.
New cylinders, I imagine there'd be some kind of a...
I, I would think so. I don't have warranty information on either bid, Justin, quite honestly.
I don't have that on one of them.
The forks wouldn't have water, because it doesn't have nothing.
What kind of warranty did you have, Mr.?
What's that?
What kind of warranty did you get on your cylinders?
Two-year.
Two-year.
Yeah, 'cause most of the, the cylinders are on the...
Two-year for seals and all that stuff. We had a seal blow out. Second time we used ours, not work.
Yeah, I don't have warranty information, but I'm...
The new cylinder was four hundred bucks.
I'm sure we're overturning the price, and it's probably what somebody was saying.
Could we include that in the purchase? Would that be agreeable? Could we include that in the purchase, the warranty for the seals and the cylinders?
I'm sure it's included in the price anyway, but I'll check on it before I give him the go-ahead to make them.
Okay, motion by Randy, second by...
Me.
Justin, any further discussion on, uh, equipment purchase? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Abstain?
Yeah.
Approve new opportunities donation.
Give them what we gave them last year.
Hundred bucks?
Hundred and twenty-five is what you gave them last five years. Five years ago.
Approve the hundred and twenty-five dollar donation.
Seven.
Motion by Justin, second by Janelle, to approve the one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public forum. Can I have any public here? Okay, now we're going down to the discussion aisle. Public works.
Uh, I talked to them a little bit later on this evening, but they're, uh, thinking, uh, they're gonna start at nine regardless, and kinda give people a little bit of chance to borrow. And they think, well, they not know until for sure something there, but the whole town's supposed to be out half hour, an hour at the most, but the ones that, that won't have electricity is Verdy's.
And mine.
The mayor and the council person.
Is that alley.
Nice party.
For how long is it?
No, and they, they're thinking three hours, period.
And what's temperature tomorrow? Nine below?
Three and a half.
No. I really don't like it.
But, I mean, and they're thinking majority of the town will be, but you know, like saying, when you cut a wire, sometimes you don't know exactly.
So how long will, will the guys along that alley be down?
Three hours.
If my water pipe freezes in my kitchen, they can fix them.
Three hours? You, you got that cold there?
Call over there sometime.
Well, let the damn things drip.
You come on over too. Get right off, quick, we're gonna freeze. Okay. There ain't no way to warn them from.
No, but they're thinking, but you don't, you don't know when you clip something in there, all of a sudden there's, another feed is going somewhere, but that's what they're thinking.
I'll just plug in electric heater then, okay?
Yeah. Do, do that.
That milk, that milk cow heater?
Yeah.
Milk cow heater.
How long will it be? Over three hours, but it's supposed to be cold. I just need to see, but I heard a lot of people got pretty cold in their houses, and it wasn't very good the last time on that end.
But do you need a little bit of heater? I, I got a...
Propane?
Heater.
I got a propane when I wanna start in the houses, you don't know. But yeah, I can, I can rig a propane up if it's longer than three hours.
Yeah, but that's kinda what they're saying, but you, you don't know, you know?
I just know how cold, like I said, there were a few people, their houses got, damn, pretty chilly last time, what is that? I'm just, I'm looking at it that way.
Yeah.
I hope it ain't longer than that.
The whole town?
The three hours is transformer to transformer, and it's gonna be lit up as they're going, you know, and kinda what sense is, but...
So maybe Verdy first in the transformer, basically.
No, I, I told him the other way back.
Will you let me in the library tomorrow morning? Come on, Verdy, open your mouth.
You better be at the warming center, Verdy.
Yeah, what were you saying, Dave?
So the whole town, nine o'clock, the, the juice gets shut off for at least thirty minutes, probably an hour.
They, they said an hour, just, you know, whatever.
But they're ready to work in the cold, so they'll be slower, I guarantee you. It's cold, it's gonna be cold. People don't move very fast in the cold.
Yeah, like, especially when you're up in the boot truck, and it's below zero.
They figure an hour.
But, not, they thought it'd be a half an hour, but he said, just say an hour, you know, and that kinda covers them a little bit. And they think not long up Sparky's and this. The heck was it? I had to figure it out. It wasn't even three hours. They did up Sparky's and all that stuff, and got the wires all up there. And then, you know, like I said, they did pretty good. They did do a little bit behind your, through your alley tonight, this evening, didn't they?
Are, are we concerned about what Alan talked about, the fact that there was, that we're doing overruns, yeah, overages, and he went through and he thought they...
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Because they've spent some time in the shop putting some of this together and haven't billed us for all their time. So...
They, they have their hourly man hours, but it's not the equipment hours.
Yeah. So, yeah, not...
Yeah.
Yeah. The whole thing's not gonna be cheap, but I think we're pretty much...
When they were in there putting the crossharms and stuff together, they weren't standing there drinking coffee, you know, they were working. And then, they left, you know, no it, no.
So they're working inside the shop? I didn't...
Yeah, they put the cross, well, like I said, the crossharms to get, go up there. They said they sooner rather have it put them together there instead of being a little cold.
They don't need me up there to manage it or anything?
Well, you, you can come on out there, Jesus.
You're asking me some trouble, aren't you?
Make a motion with Jerry. There goes the price, huh?
Nancy, are you gonna be here tomorrow morning, or you just want to leave?
No, I'll be here.
Oh, okay.
He's starting 'cause they're gonna heat.
Without electricity?
Well, we should only be out an hour here, so I'll just just warm in. Besides which, if I leave, who are they gonna yell at?
They'll find Jerry.
Yeah, they'll try to keep them.
Okay. Uh, will you come to Jerry?
Yep.
City clerk.
Sack County League meeting is Wednesday night. Anybody besides Verdy wanna go?
Or me?
Or me.
Okay, that's all I have.
Sack County Solid Waste Board.
The good news is the ticking fees stay the same, and the assessment to those cities stay the same as last year. So... And I approve their budget.
Sack County Emergency Management Board.
It'd be you.
It'd be you.
It's always news to you.
Right, I had a meeting last week.
I even made the Calhoun one.
Oh.
With Jackson Township.